Go ahead and help them for the roll call.
Mark?
Here.
Erica?
Here.
Mike?
Present.
MC?
Yeah.
JJ?
Here.
Okay, if you'll join me in brief pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was great to have you on, although I thank you for the study you did with us. We thank you for an opportunity here to conduct the business of the city. We pray, Lord, that we do it in a manner that is worthy of your brevity, Lord. We ask you to forgive us for our failure in the Christ of you, Lord.
Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Got a motion by Erica, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, the next item is the January ninth and January twenty-third minutes, do I hear a motion to approve?
Oh, to approve.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by JJ, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Those are approved. Next item is the financial reports for the January city financials, do I hear a motion to approve?
Mayor Noblet, we need to separately do the January twenty-third minutes that are in our packet.
I can't do them separately, I asked for a motion.
Oh, for both, okay. There's a, well, I'm doing it over here. No, I just wanted to make sure, I'm just checking.
Being sure we're not skipping.
Yes, yeah.
You can always go back.
Alright, the next item is the January twenty-fourth.
On the city financials, I asked Mayor Noblet about the budget and it was approved by the council this way, so I put it in the budget this way, but he'll have to do an amendment and I wanted to make you all aware of it. It was ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think I, I think my computer did a double click.
Which line item was that, do you recall?
It was for something like the, I don't remember if it was.
You'll see it in your financials.
The.
Let's see, sorry, what was that?
It's like yard sale permit, no knock list, no knock list.
No knock list, that's what it is.
And that was meant to be a hundred dollars and it showed up as ten thousand, it was approved that way, I'm not gonna be. It's a projection of income, but the next amendment, it'll be amended.
I just wanted to point that out to the council, so when you do approve it, you're gonna see that it was there, it was approved in the budget that way, so it was put in the budget that way, but it'll need to be amended.
It'll be amended at the next, next time that we amend them.
Which would be? We'll prove this is ten thousand, is that okay?
Yeah, because it was approved in the budget that way and that's showing that that's what's budgeted for. But we're never, I mean, it's an income projection and so unless we receive ten thousand between now and when we amend it, it really doesn't change any spending authority or anything else, it doesn't hurt anything to sit till we amend.
But that was the only error I saw, putting in the, the budget, it was kind of a red flag, so I brought it to y'all's attention.
And it won't be, we're not gonna do an amendment just for that, we'll do it in the next amendment, we'll take care of it, because like I said, it's not something we can just spend. Okay, any other, well, do I have, have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, got a motion to approve by JJ, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That is approved. Next item is the water and sewer financials, do I hear a motion to approve?
Oh, to approve.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by JJ, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And it's approved. Next item is our reports, January fire department report. It was included, our, our chief is currently out on a call. So. If you'd like, we can, if you have questions for him, we can address them in the header. Do, the next item is the police.
I have a question.
Sure.
So are fires used, is this like the last year paid off or we've been conceived to pay off?
It's like I said last year, we're not sure yet, they're still in association, we still work outside the city limits. We haven't adjusted any kind of taxes to pay for the fire department, we just luckily.
But would it be the association? I'll just ask him.
The association has to do with the volunteers.
I know that, I didn't know, because we talked about the association will eventually resolve.
Yeah.
So, I will, do you know when that being?
We don't, we thought it would be last year, but according to.
The reason I ask this is the dudes are here again.
Yeah, Gary, when Gary was talking to me about it near the end of the year, I asked him, I said, weren't we going to be dissolving the association? And he said, that was the initial plan, but they haven't gotten ready to do so yet, they are still supporting the volunteers that we still utilize.
So we still utilize volunteers?
Yes.
We utilize volunteers, then it makes sense.
We staffed initially with the, with the full time at about a third of full staffing numbers. But that's where we are now, do you have something?
Just something to add, but Erica, I, I came over to the last meeting or meeting before, but the chief pulled me aside afterwards and wants to meet, talk to me about that very issue on how we like.
I don't know, so it is potentially going to be resolved and done with? Or is it that's still cut out in the air?
I, I don't know, because you, you all, your fire service area extends far beyond the.
So it might be beneficial to just keep the association around?
That's what we have to, we have to figure out.
Right, you and she handle it.
How do you, yeah, how do you invite for that service outside your, outside of boundary, how do you get some compensation back for that?
Would be a duty to the association. I gotcha, alright, thank you for that.
Anything else? Next item is the police report. You guys have a, a copy of all the numbers and I was gonna hand this out to you guys, this, from this point forward, it's not gonna look so pretty. We're gonna start doing it this, this month as well. We've broken down the calls that would go on even more into detail that way, you guys can actually see what types of calls, whether it's a battery or a forgery motor assist or what, just it's broken down.
That's interesting.
And it, and it's a lot easier, the, the, the way we did it before with the graphs and all that, we're tran, we're, we're doubling up the work to, to do that, to make it look pretty. Because we're having to transfer, transfer these numbers into something else and, and, and it's just a lot easier just to do it like this, because it's broken down even further. Because we would have to combine all these numbers for calls for service. And in this way, you can see what the calls for service are. Like I said, it, it could be civil matter, burglary, alarm, dog, physical disturbance.
You guys, it shows really your scope of.
So it kind of gives you guys a better idea of what we're doing, other than just calls for service.
So all these are calls except, I mean, business check isn't a call, right?
Right, well, right, right, business, business checks is, is the guy still.
It's a routine.
Yeah, they go around, check the business, rattle doors, make sure they're locked.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was assuming that, but I just wanna make sure during the day, you know, calls.
Did we, did we catch the prowler?
Do what?
Did we catch the prowler, it says there's one call for a prowler, did we?
Now, that could be, that was the call that this fast said it was.
Okay.
We, now, whether it was a real prowler, I'm assuming no, because I didn't hear about it.
Yeah.
It could be, we had prowler calls when there was deer in the yard.
Yeah.
So, but that's what it's labeled as.
Well, like it's set off something with alarm.
Right.
Or lights or something.
Like deer in the.
Where they hear something outside to be around here.
Deer in the yard is an example, like just something random that might set off the alarm, or someone cutting through or.
Right.
I mean, that, we don't have the, the specifics of each culture, I'd be up here all night.
It's still good stuff, yeah.
So we, we just wanted to give you guys, this is more detailed on the calls we go on, so you just don't see the, the old way where you just look and say, okay, calls for complaints or calls for service, alarms, dogs, thinking that's all we did.
Yeah.
We wanted to give you a better definition of everything.
Chief, sorry, I can't take care of it, there's, there is something interesting in here, Erica, just show me.
What's that?
Three missing child, it was, but one found, so is there actually two missing children?
Where do you see that?
First penny.
Second from the bottom of her face.
Missing child, juvenile, total three.
And the found was up a few above that, one found.
Adult slash child, so.
I, I, I don't see what you're saying when you say found.
It's, it's a F, F and B C, it's just found person, child, adult, it's just like a kid wandering or something, maybe.
Or it could be an, an adult, it's.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Is this a child?
Might be a person, adult, child. So if you're responding.
That, that could be a runaway, all that can be anything.
Real quick.
But I have, I have three, you know.
Three missing child. Either, I, I don't know, that was the amount of calls we got, now the found, I don't know, I'll have to ask Chief to explain that a little better for me.
Well, if they were, if somebody was still missing and it was a big deal, you would have put out something.
Correct.
So that's also.
That could be, that could be three runaway juvenile reports and then an adult missing.
Or an adult with dementia or something.
Correct.
Well, Chief, I really appreciate, I think this is very helpful, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to come with some good stories next time.
Well.
Let me ask more questions.
Yeah, I'll tell stories, but.
We can go with no story tonight, Chief.
Number of tickets written.
Yeah, there should be.
You know, there's. Traffic stops is forty-eight.
Forty-eight, and then there should be one where it says.
Tickets.
Citations issued, maybe thirty-four, yeah.
Yeah, I was looking for something that's even ticket.
Then you notice it comes, the numbers off to the left or the letters or numbers, you know, it's, it's just a brief, that's the, what Saint Com uses, it's shorthanded, you know, when they're typing that stuff. So it, it went in alphabetical order, yes, it'd be nice if traffic stops and citations issued could be right beside each other, but.
Where is citation?
Where is citation, I don't see it.
Where you saw, where did you see the thirty-fourth?
Well, I think, I think there might not be something for citation, because isn't this, I mean, besides the business checks, these are calls, right?
Right, right.
You wouldn't need a call for a traffic stop necessarily, but it does show traffic, so like vehicles.
Oh, so you don't see tickets issued, because we had a call for a traffic stop, they did traffic, if that makes sense?
Yeah, so.
You're not gonna see how many citations are issued.
We can fix that, this is, this is something new, I'm glad you guys are looking at it, because, you know, I just looked over it and said, yeah, that's great, we spread this out.
It's kind of interesting.
I'll read this better.
But we can absolutely put how many citations you have to issue, it is thirty-four, it's on the other.
Yeah, it's on the other one.
Yeah, it's on the other one, if this one's going away, no, I, I understand, but yeah, I'll make sure we get that on there.
Cool.
That'll be simple.
I don't see that.
That's where they come from.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's like, where is it?
This cleaning makes sense.
Good stuff, Chief.
Realize how much y'all do, so thank you.
Well, then, you have to, these.
That works, that works, oh, maybe?
Well, we're using two different softwares, like.
Oh, you're just trying to get rid of each other?
We're trying to, to narrow it down to one, because we're taking two different programs.
Yeah.
And get numbers here, get numbers here, and then we have to physically add them with a calculator and do it all. We're trying to simplify it for us, I'll be loud, honest with you, and, but getting citations and warnings, we can add that to this, that's not at all.
Yeah, sure, no, that's good, it's, it can, it's good reporting.
Thank you, thank you, my name is. Next item is the water and sewer report.
I don't think we're having to provide, might not be as interesting as the chief had. Well, we always like to hear about the water. And for those of you that don't know me, I'm Andrew Stevens, go ahead and take a look at the public works report, I just wanna go over the water loss over the last month, because it's been January. So we purchased a little over thirty-one million gallons from Bentonville and we lost almost nineteen million. And so that's a water loss of sixty-one percent or about fifty-five thousand dollars. And now we did repair a leak over there by the escape room, we have larger ones. And we do have several leaks that we're aware of and I tried to do all the depth today, wasn't able to, but these are on the radar and I'm sure, I'm sure enough to do with it. We have, on that note, as far as the water loss, so we got this signed proposal submitted to the Kinnon group. Group and we're waiting for their, basically the selected, specific date for mobilization. I called them a couple of weeks ago and they said that they're doing some other work in Arkansas around April, so we'll probably try to shoot for that time.
That's okay, we don't have time for a minute.
Yeah, can I ask you a question, just about, about this problem, I mean, when you look at these numbers, how, how many other cities do you, have you worked with? I mean, when you look at those numbers, because again, I, I'm still the novice on city government, right, you know, is that a crazy number, is that way higher than normal?
Sixty percent is pretty high.
Pretty high, what would be normal for a city, like what would be a realistic expectation?
Okay. You see some, some that are up over fifty percent as well, and, you know, we're just talking about some other way, like, a lot of it depends on returning and aid to your system.
Yeah.
Like, they spring to the situation, it's, you know, you don't always, the, the leaks don't always serve us.
Yeah.
You know, that's part of the, part of the challenge we fight here in similar areas. And when they come out of here, we can identify them, but sometimes they go underground and it's beer.
Well, in our situation, like Mike said, the, the brown road leak is, is forty feet from my house and I can watch it, you know, bubbling up. And again, to the, to eight hundred thousand gallons a, a month, and we just don't have any to fix it, and that's not, you guys, you guys are doing a great job letting us know, it makes me feel good now.
And I was looking at these estimates on the, the amount of the leaks and I'm pretty sure we, we're just calculating that based on the size we're on, so.
Yeah. I understand, yeah.
Well, the case, I don't know, the case rank doesn't really help us.
Yeah.
And then, Mike, didn't you, the thing that council members, the water thing that you were supposed to do, that there, states have council members do, didn't you bring something for, was it, and you gotta see? Then it said in the, like thirty or forty percent, what was it?
Twenty-five to, you know, twenty to thirty percent.
That's what it, that's what the state got.
Twenty to twenty-five to thirty percent maximum, I mean.
Yes, well, I mean, I, I was just surprised, I remember being newer on council and you had read that information, so that's why.
Yeah, I took it as well, I don't know what else.
And that's something else we were gonna be discussing at work session, that a council needs to be, while we're scheduling wins for this year, needs to get, have badges.
We do have, my unit doesn't have anybody fixing it, but we do, I think the city's contracting, so I like to fix.
We do have people that are contracted that are fixing, they fixed seventeen the previous.
One by, this is the critical one over there by the, that you just mentioned.
Right.
Well, that was, that was Jeff, that was, and I, I saw Jeff do it, do a leak today.
Jeff was there with contractors.
Yeah, well, I saw Jeff with Larry, Eric today, or something.
And other contractor.
Yeah.
Yes.
The contractor, who was the contractor?
It's, there's a guy named Eric that does our boring and he also has technicians with him that assists with repairs. And they are doing that on a contract basis for the city while we're going through the hiring process.
Those contract bases that we have for the city, did we bid that job or did?
It's on a case by case and it's within the spending authority and it's well within the.
But it's, we're using the same person?
Uh, we're using the same contractor, there, because most of our, most, most of the leaks where we used to just tear a street up, we are now boring under the street and, and replacing lines to the other side where the, the water line or the sewer line runs down one side and all the service for the other side uh, goes under the street and we are boring under the street, utilizing his boring company already. And with them already on site, it's much cheaper to utilize their, their service guys and it's hard to find a boring company that will come out for one or two bores. It's, and he will do those, so that's how we got to using.
So we're paying them on a job like that?
On a job, a job basis, it's needed.
Because that's under, you know, it's been.
It's, and because that's what's needed, he does, we don't have situations where he's coming out to six on one street that he can set up and be there for the next day and a half and get six done. We have one on this side of town, one on that side of town, then he has other things contracted for the next day or two and he comes back and does another one or two. And he's in and out and back and forth and he's, like I said, we did seventeen, which when we had our own employees, we didn't do seventeen most months.
That cost is reflected on it?
It's in the.
And is that, is, I guess, is that what, he just does, that's it, he, he's boring in other cities, he's not boring for our.
Right, and he does for other utilities and things like that.
And you're saying that we didn't have to bid it because it's continued spending and working?
Right. And it will be very, I mean, we'll still use some bore, but a lot of that will come down as we hire people. But that is something that we're well underway with.
So how did you find him?
Jeff has been in that industry a long time and he reached out to him initially and he's also oh, our water, her ex-husband's family, but that wasn't the initial contact that was through Jeff initially.
Since we're using, we have a lot of issue, was wise to get a bid on that or not?
I don't have a problem with getting a bid on it if we.
I mean, for, even if we have it on, you use the same one. Well, how, I mean, we live in conflict, there is this stuff, it's stand for.
We can just, I mean, when I've discussed it before, we were told that we were within our authority, but if we want to get additional bids and have additional standby, I don't have a problem with that, but then it gets to be, which one do you call today?
No, I'm just saying that even if you use the same one, wouldn't it have been better to just find one after we have been operating and just using somebody, somebody else that we hired for the city is bringing in at the, I don't know if you said the sister in law, or whatever. I just want to have a more understanding of how we run the city, that's what.
Yeah, and I understand, but I, I think that, and again, and I would like the, the legal opinion on that as well, but I do know when we initially started it, we were calling around asking people to come and we were having trouble finding anyone that would. And he was usually available.
So how much on average every day please, do you say?
I, I don't have.
How much was on monthly, how much was on monthly last? And do you know how much was on monthly last month?
Unfortunately, that's water and sewer.
Yeah, I don't know exactly.
Let's do this.
We can go over it at work session.
Yeah, let's put it on the agenda to work session, we're not gonna do anything on it in a week. Thank you, if that's alright for everybody.
It makes sense.
Because it needs to be addressed, unlike see where it's at on the.
Yeah.
Thank you, by the way.
Thanks.
Thanks. Next item is the water and sewer committee report, do you have anything?
I, I guess you went over the, the board and.
Okay.
We're dealing with, it's like that, as far as the, we don't, the water and sewer committee doesn't have a totally over. Anything as far as the employee goes and operation of the water department, sewer department goes, so I just wanna make sure, what is really, the only thing we do is regarding the NACO and what's going on with water line, that kind of stuff, but no, that's a deal where the operation of the.
Right.
For running a specific project, can you see more of this?
No, no, I'm just saying, I wanna, you wanna know, because sometimes people don't understand water and sewer committee, they think that all the water loss stuff has to do with, I just wanna make sure we have a NACO to do with that, not.
Not your committee.
I have a question, do you think the committee is still up for your time and everybody else's?
I think it's important to have it regard for the fact that there is so much stuff going, going to NACO and stuff that is necessary to be there. However, I think the scope of it has decreased compared to what I remember years ago, once years ago, the budget thing, that looking at all how much money we're spending, all that was part of it, however, for whatever reason, it's not part of it now, and I'm okay with it, I don't, I mean, that, if that's what, I don't know how it happened, maybe there was something.
Yeah, that was wrong before I got here, I picked up what was in place.
Because when I was on sewer committee back years ago when Kerschel started, all that was part of it, that's why it wasn't manageable. I think you, you could manage it better because we had looking at all that money, but it expressed what the water company.
Company.
Really, I, I.
Once NACO's done, do you see a benefit to it?
Well.
Once NACO's, like, do you see a benefit to it?
I think it's always, maybe we need to.
I just wish there was more, like.
More, I think.
I, like, you could hold more accountability as a committee, if you understand what I'm saying, because I don't want to waste your time and I appreciate you serving on it, I just.
Mark said.
Yeah, I love that too.
And you're on it too?
He's the chairman.
Actually, I knew that, actually, I just, sorry, I just, but I just, I just wanna make sure that.
From my perspective, I like it, because I learn more, I get more insight, you know, Julie's there and usually Andrew and, and Daniel are there and we go into more depth on some things. And we do.
Do you feel like you need more information? Like budgeting ones or anything?
You know, I think that's a good point MC brings out, is spending more time on the budget and like maybe being an influence at upfront more.
Precisely.
I just joined recently, so I didn't really go through a full budget, so maybe we'll do that in October, November-ish, December, but we haven't, we haven't really, that, that part, we have to kind of exercise authority over spin, right?
We really need to look at that whole committee's description, we want to see what we need to do, what is we authorized to do, what, what should be part of that whole stuff you're gonna discuss, you know, what are the.
Yeah.
Item lines for that.
You're the chairman, you have, you get the.
I think, I think more eyes on the budget setting would be the better, in my, in my opinion, more eyes on a city budget is better. Then, because you can pick up different things, just, I just wanted to see, because I thought maybe you guys had a, a part in that and I would love as a council.
That's what I wanted to, everybody knows that.
And that you would have more, more to do with the budget matters, because maybe more eyes are better than one or whatever. I don't know if Julia's part, I don't know, Will has a part in it, but I really think.
Julie's with operational, she brings a lot of good, moves underground information.
But I think more eyes on, on a budget and more questions, we're always.
By the way, while on that, I also see why she shouldn't be here to answer questions if she needs to.
Yep. More, another thing with the work session.
Or she could provide like an email summary, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, she has to the committee, I guess, you, if she's coming to the committee, the committee can ask her questions and you, and you report back.
Yeah, I think it's good right now, for example, that question, what I do, you know, Kim can answer that question.
No, she can't. But, I mean, if the budget is more part of the, the committee again, then she's there with you. That, that's, I don't know, I was just wanting to hear your feedback, sorry, I go.
I think she could help us.
We should explore that in the next work session, to see, I mean, what is the current description of the committee and what, you know, what can, what can the committee do, like, you know, could we give it, I don't wanna say use the word team, but you know, could we give it a little bit more.
A grasp on things?
Yes, actually, you know, to, to do substantially as opposed to just an advisory or a supervisory.
That's another item, we'll.
I think it's fair, definitely.
But I, I don't know, because you come back with information, but it seems like your hands are tied a lot and if you could get a grasp on something. And if you could get a grasp on something or give a little more feedback or be a little more, I don't like the useful is other word, be a little more.
Accountable.
Yes, for what's there. But, cause you always have a passion, but I mean, you always have since I've been on. So, thank you.
I mean, we don't vote on anything. It is more kind of steering, you know, than putting thoughts in. I agree with you, giving it more in the teeth, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if we did vote on stuff or anything.
Vote on something to bring to the council, just as a committee, yet you're not voting on proofing, but you know, this, we really want the council to look into this.
Sure. Which we did do a little bit with like, when we talked about bringing in the contractor, so we're all like, yeah, let's do it. I mean, that's an example where we did bring something to the council.
We need to start getting into it, but we haven't really, we need to scope up the.
Like the scope of the committee?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Alright, thank you so much.
Could we, your last, I forgot to ask, can some questions on the financial report? Can we do that?
We can step back.
Our finances, is that alright there, buddy?
Sure.
Kim, it's not on the report. I have something else I wanna ask you, but it's about the finances.
Sure.
Tonight, we're gonna be asked to approve one million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Where's that gonna come from?
This is the first time I saw it, so this is new to me too.
It's coming from the federal government. It's grant.
Or the work orders?
Or the uh.
He's talking about the.
Is it a?
The work orders we already got?
He's not. Yeah, yeah, that's. Okay, those are the ones that are for the, it's the relocation, the detention pond is the grant.
How much of a matching grant is that?
It's seventy-five percent.
So we'll still have to come up with twenty-five percent line?
Yeah.
But that, yeah, I think my question is about that.
The others are the RDOTs that we've been discussing all along and that Daniel keeps talking about. We will get a section done and the state will reimburse us for that section at ninety percent on average. The only time we'll have to pay anything is where we have crossings of the, of the streets, but, or the highway. That's not an optional thing. We have to move our water and sewer lines out of their right-of-way and they're gonna pay for them. Well, but they pay for them as we go.
Well, I think that's what.
That, was that the PowerPoint? That was the PowerPoint he was in depth on you.
I'll go back and watch it too. I mean, and that's the thing is, um, which one, I think we maybe should wait to talk about these until we're gonna go on. But, but I, I just think that when it, if, what Mayor Nala was saying is true, and I'm sure somebody here, I'm sure Justin can confirm that. Say, you know, we're gonna reimburse it ninety percent, then, you know, whatever number that is, it'd be ten percent of that, which is still something to discuss, especially in the budget, but.
We still have to pay.
Mm-hmm.
So where's it?
We pay uh in small segments and they reimburse us.
Okay. So how often is the small segment? I mean, we're getting asked, we're asked to approve that tonight.
Do you have that information with you? I mean, Daniel went thoroughly through it last meeting.
It's, it's all. At the work session. And I understand we're gonna get reimbursed.
And he went through and answered all of these questions about that it's in small segments that will get reimbursed at a hundred percent on everything that's outside the, the current right-of-way.
But like, I think he's trying to figure out the breakdown of small segments. Am I correct? So like, are we putting all this, we put all of this out? And then we eventually get back where we put out this much and then they reimburse. Is that where you're, like, the distribution? How it's working?
And I've, have you been through that with another city? Is it monthly? Is it every time you submit?
You can do it like, well, some, but you can also do it like five steps, just like.
So it goes either way?
Yeah, some just wait till the end and then you get the full reimbursement.
But that's their option.
You've had some that will go a long.
So we get a full reimbursement, a hundred percent?
It's a hundred percent on everything that's outside their current right-of-way. It's, and he estimated it'll be ninety to ninety-five percent of it is outside of their current right-of-way.
And part, and part of the work order, I mean, our continued work on pinning that percentage down basically and submitting to RDOT. All the information you have, then they kind of negotiate a relocation agreement. There will be a little bit of back and forth. And then we'll lay on a reimbursed percentage. And, but we're expecting it to be around that ninety percent range.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that's what he said on ninety percent. And yeah, I remember that, that meeting that said it's a good thing the city has money to put aside. If we didn't have money, who would have part-time coming up with that money? Yeah, so. However, I think what my question is, are we gonna do it? So we know how, when we have to. How the money's gonna be spent in one location or is it gonna be on way to the other?
We're still gonna pay it, is, is the deal. So I was just wondering where all that money's coming from.
Well, we still have several million dollars in surplus, right? I mean, you're not gonna overdraft the city debit card.
We're not gonna overdraft anything and we're not paying it all at once. It'll be getting reimbursed as we go. So that kind of negates, I mean, we're not gonna ever write a check for one million dollars for moving the water line or the sewer line.
Well, that includes Fields Lane Detention Pond and the uh.
No, that's the.
Fields Lane.
It is.
Fields Lane?
It's part of that same channel and I brought through the last work session that we would add that to that so that it, they will pay seventy-five percent of the entire Fields Lane project because it's all part of the same flood channel.
So that actually saves us some, okay, cause we were expecting to pay for that, the whole Fields Lane project initially?
Right.
And we, I guess we probably have paid for at least some of it.
Some of it we did, some we've done with thirty-five percent match from the state. This one will be a seventy-five percent match. And we discussed adding the Fields Lane deal to the project because the people at ANRC said this is a viable project that they, is one of only fourteen, they're recommending to FEMA from the state Arkansas. And that they recommended adding that since it's in the same flood channel.
Okay.
So I guess my question is whether the money comes along. I think it's from general front to pay and then put it back anyway.
Okay.
Thanks.
So is this a street project and you're requesting that the general fund pay?
Just like the streetlights. I don't think, I'd have to look at my, at my report.
Correct.
Uh, I think I budgeted for this one out of our, out of our uh projects.
Out of the street fund?
Sure, but I've got to double check. But I do know that some, the stoplights were budgeted out of the general fund after discussions with the council. And I don't know on this one if that was the case or not, but I'll double check it.
It's just, we need to make sure that we keep track of, if you're gonna spend out of the street, we need to keep track of what the budget, what actual money is in the account in the street. Cause if we didn't have the money in the street fund to pay for the street lights, we need to make sure that we have the money and the funds to pay for all these other projects.
Right.
And I apologize, Mike, I had known about the, these projects, but when it come to the, the retention pond, I didn't know anything about that. So that was, that was new to me.
But that was what he had all the slides for and a bunch of stuff, or the uh.
Yeah, yeah, I think they, they just wanna know where the money is.
The last work session, yeah. Okay, anything else? The engineering report?
We skipped the plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, planning commission report. I put a check by it by accident earlier and I was just moving on.
Great. Uh, planning commission, uh, meeting this last, last week. We looked at the Pathfinder PZD project, they've resubmitted their effective works for PZD and we've been talking about this and all. They have a community with it. Um, they're moving forward, uh, kind of went over an initial review of the PZD document. And uh had requested some additional items and just kind of minor revisions. They got a pretty good document for what they're wanting. Really good stuff to protect them and, you know, what they want in the future and, you know, really uh protect the city with some building design requirements and things like that that they didn't have in that lot of them, so. They're gonna be having another public hearing for that, uh, just because it's been revised from their initial uh submission. So, once we have another public hearing, we'll go before planning commission and we all, uh, won't be, oh, before y'all next month, we'll be paid over the slide. Now, the other major thing we're working on is we've got a formal first draft of the new subdivision document. And we have been reviewing that. Um, I'm gonna take it before the planning commission at the next work session. And, well, sorry, the March work session. And yeah, I haven't started reviewing it. We'll be starting over that document probably within a couple of months. Hopefully have a finalized document for y'all to start looking at reviewing. Let's get us a new subdivision code.
Is that you and Juliet doing that?
Yes, me, Juliet. Uh, she's got a lot of people, you know, part of working out there. Lynn is one of the main close contact. Uh, another uh lady that works over here, Courtney. She's, you know, part of the, all of the group that are all essentially ex-city planners. And this is what been done over the years, so all ready to that. But that is all I have to say. So I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, engineering report.
Okay. So the RDOT state aid, that's the asphalt overlay over on midway to Wright Street. Uh, so the concrete corners have been located flat over there. And we'll work on getting six right-of-way dedications. And so we just finished up preparing right-of-way exhibits. And um we need to engage Cassie to get this pulled together basically. Uh, the Wangwill Road Fields Lane drainage, so pay requests have been reviewed and submitted for payment. Right, facilitation change award is being presented later tonight. Uh, the only reason the project exceeded the contract and I was due to three emergency street repairs by Ola Akers, Brown Road is a slant. And then the ARD FEMA flood mitigation grant, Bo-Tai Lot, which is a regional detention pond over on Brown Road. Uh, that you guys discussed a little bit. So we have the notes of, notes of intent submitted to ARD on late December twenty-four, three. And we were contracted by NRD on February fifth to tell us our notes of intent was chosen, move forward. And then we'd be requesting additional information. And we got that additional information back to NRD on February fourteen. And the FEMA grant application was completed and uploaded to FEMA GO online portal on February twenty-third. The additional work al- along Fields Lane and South Wangwill Road were incorporated just submission. So then we got some uh estimates from Diamond City. So the downstream concept was twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And the upstream concept was, from Diamond City, was fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the notes of the grant awards are not expected to be announced until later this year, fall, twenty, twenty-fourth. And as you guys discussed earlier, we have a resolution in your packet tonight, uh, they agreed to the cost share commitment of twenty-five percent. The RDOT TAP, West Walls Road, Sand Roads, the sidewalk projects. We got thirty percent plans submitted to RDOT on February sixteenth and we're waiting comments on those. Uh, the sand area sewer master plan, so ADH requested the city do this, uh, because of growth from the number of developments coming in. Uh, we gotta analyze the past few of the existing infrastructure and provide recommendations for improvement to support the current contributions and future expansion for the next ten, twenty years. And the, uh, the final report for that work is on Chinese agenda. Uh, so an update to the drain, drainage manual. Uh, Daniel discusses during the work session. Uh, there's a clarification to incorporate into the drainage manual. That's on Chinese agenda as well. And then the new highway one twelve, two sixty-four traffic signal. So, uh, we completed the footprint survey and we got that to the Petersen Associates. And Petersen Associates, uh, provided us a design schedule. And that is the following. So they're wanting to submit to the city on March eighteenth. And they want to submit to RDOT on, by March twenty-second. And they have their schedule to have a little bit back and forth with RDOT, you know, addressing the comments. And they're, they're wanting to have, uh, RDOT approvals by June for that. And we're coordinating fire department to make sure that implement a traffic pipe control button. Um, the program.
I just, I just wanna thank Mike for checking into the stoplight because before that, he was thinking about two million, three million dollar. After he checked with his contract, a different company, then he came down to what, to four hundred thousand, what's that? I think we would.
I have a question. What happens to Pace Line?
It's part of the project.
On the.
It says worth the.
The Wangwill Road.
Oh, that was uh the, we had a flood and the flood, uh, was undercutting the road.
That we just paid?
That we paid. It wasn't undercut, it wasn't the asphalt giving way. Down at the bottom of the ditch, it eroded deeper and back under the road. And so they put grounded drift wrap in there and protected the edge of the road. It was one spot near the, near the highway. You can see it there on the south side. And uh it was not a part of their earlier project. Thank you. Thanks. Engineering report?
Good evening. Uh, much of work last month, then we talked about the work session a little while ago. But uh, has been around the engineering, uh, all the work's items that are before you tonight. Um, the data dimensional subdivision code, I'm also reviewing that. I'm turning a little light and getting back to comments on it, I'll work on it. Uh, so looking at that to go forward to planning commission, to, uh, council, that's a really important piece of code that needs, uh, needs updating. We're operating all for, uh, a, uh, older, older document that's served as well for a long time, been ready for everything. Um, the uh last item is um on the pump station. I think a lot of y'all know, you may have more information than I do at this time, but you don't need to think of it that well. I mean, I kinda tell you where, where, where we're at, or just where I, I don't know where we're at. You all, you all wanna hear that or?
Is that, is that the situation Tal was, that was, yeah, Tal came before the meeting and, and.
Okay, I, okay, I didn't know that. Well, um, uh, then, I, I, my, my understanding is to check and see boxes off. Is that we're still operating with a muffled generator. Um, I haven't been out there personally to hear it, but I understand it is, uh, a lower frequency volume.
I don't know.
Erica, you been out there?
Yeah, I went out with my watch.
Okay, can, can look at.
So is he in his home?
Yes.
Is he in there for a little bit?
He's been there.
Since last week. I can't remember what day it was last week.
That was actually what I want my conflict.
Yeah, since, since last week. Uh, the rebar's been, uh, been tied up. We're gonna wait for a delivery of a, some type of a form, uh, that happened today from what Daniel texted me about. Uh, and so those will be installed, I think concrete schedule will be for Wednesday, but uh, not, not this Wednesday, but the, the following Wednesday, uh, later after all that's going on. So, and, and uh, uh, that's basically the update that I have at this point.
Yeah, Tal came before the meeting, basically said that they haven't been out there working very much, but that makes a lot of sense. They're waiting for something.
Well, they're working on the rebar and then, I forgot what day everyone's being said, um, uh, they finished it and then wait for the freeze up thing to happen today, so.
Makes sense.
But it's been moved forward, see the pictures, it's been part of the progress.
Somebody needs to let him know about this left day and why they were waiting because he sent an email.
I'll be sending an email.
Yeah.
I was thinking he was gonna be here here in person, so I hadn't sent it yet with everything else, but he will get it personally in a minute.
Any, any questions for me?
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks. Next item is the clerk, clerk recorder's report. Do you have anything?
Nothing that we're like up to here in an audit, so.
Yeah.
Um, um, fortunately enough, we have an auditor that has been, uh, with us before at the city. So he's kind of aware of what, what we have. Um, everything looks great so far. They're trying to decide what kind of audit they're gonna want to, um, do. There's three different types of audit. There's just a financial audit, then there's a, a mid-grade audit. There's just a financial audit, then there's a mid-grade audit, and then there's a full-blown federal audit. And we're thinking we're going to have to do the full-blown federal audit because of the FEMA money that we have over the last three years, because it's twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three is what they're doing. What we've collected was seven hundred fifty, over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of FEMA money. So, that puts us in a whole new bracket of finances that we have to, to audit for FEMA.
Every federal audit, I mean, every federal dollar, whether it came in under ARCA FEMA or whatever, counts toward that number. And when you get seven fifty for a year, they don't do federal audits, but they notify us that we have to go get someone to do that.
Correct. So, they're actually going to, we're going to pack up a lot of our finances, and they're going to take them to Fayetteville and work on them there because they're actually bringing in another auditor, so there's going to be two working on our audit. We're looking at three months is what they're saying. So, hopefully, we'll have something back before fall.
On this, on this federal audit, is that some of their private practice, or is that?
It's legislative audit, it's the state.
But they don't, legislative won't do the federal, it's a federal compliance audit. And he told me yesterday, he talked to his boss, and they don't do, they will notify us, and that's why they ask. Barry and Associates does, and they're the one doing the water and sewer audit, and they're about to start next week. And on theirs, a lot of the work that was done is like a denative where the money was used, so it's appropriate at the sewer, and they did the sewer audit. And this is more, it does look at spending, but a bigger part of what it looks at is like the regulatory compliance. The, are we following the Davis Bacon payment? Or are our contractors following federal guidelines on payments to their employees through Davis Bacon? And through some of the others, Americans still is being used and all that. They have to certify that stuff, and we're doing monthly reports that shouldn't be an issue because we are complying, and we are doing those reports on a monthly basis.
I was worried about that, I was just wondering if there's going to be a Fed coming in, because she said federal, no, you said something.
It's federal compliance audit, is what they refer to it as.
How does that work if all of our stuff is in Fayetteville?
This is from previous years, it's not current year.
Oh, okay.
Maybe twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three is what they'll be. And they did that during COVID, and they came in and did the previous years for COVID. They pack it all up and then take it because they can work on it in their offices. It's fine, we normally just sign off that they take what?
Those years?
Yeah, those years.
But then you have to, you have to get a federal audit on top of that?
I'm hoping not. I'm hoping we can get through one, and then I can go through another one.
Like a separate, so this audit will happen first, and then the federal audit probably will happen since over seven hundred dollars? Seven hundred thousand?
With the water and sewer year, last year's being audited by Barry and Associates here in a couple of weeks. And them being the ones that do that particular audit, they'll probably do both together. And that
But if all this stuff is in Fayetteville, that's where I'm confused.
No, the water and sewer is not going to Fayetteville. The legislative audit does not do water and sewer, that's why we have an outside audit in there.
For our general fund stuff, they do, they have to do that, correct? Or is that something?
That's from a previous year, twenty twenty two is when the general
I don't think you understand, can I just ask? So, all this stuff that went is going to Fayetteville?
Yes.
That's general funds, all stuff?
City funds, so we can minus water sewer.
So, do we have to get a federal audit on all city funds, or is that what's happening now?
We're going to have to get an audit on the general fund, definitely, because that's where FEMA money was deposited into the general fund.
Separate audit.
That is going to be a separate audit.
At a different time?
This is the first time I've heard of it.
That's where I'm confused, because if all this stuff is with in Fayetteville, how can this company that you said is going to do the audit at the same time? Do you pull it in Fayetteville?
Because the general fund part of it was spent in twenty twenty two, and they're taking twenty twenty three.
Oh, I thought she said she would do it.
They're taking all three years.
Are they taking all three?
All three years.
Okay.
And one, two, three, we're all confused.
Then this, the compliance audit would have to follow this on, on the twenty two one. But with the sewer audit.
I was just asking about this. I believe you have a sewer.
Yeah, the sewer will happen conjunction, but this one may have to be delayed.
That's what my question was.
It just has to happen this year.
When I talked to the auditor today. When I talked to the auditor today, he wanted to see where, one of them was two hundred thirty four thousand dollars. That money was deposited, he wanted to see, it was deposited into the general, he wanted to see where it was deposited back into the sewer to reimburse the sewer because that's where the money was spent. I had a check depositing it into the general fund. I had another check with the exact same amount depositing into the sewer to reimburse. It pretty much balanced each other out, it was very, very clean.
So, he's looking at those to make sure
Correct.
Those transactions between the water sewer and the general?
Correct.
Yep, okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Ken.
But other than that, I mean, everything is going fire dues, kicking our tail. So, so we're getting fire dues in. Gary is also working with a grant writer for the grant for the fire department. So, that's going pretty good, too. Not any issues with that, so we're hoping we can get approved for that grant.
The grant for the new, potential new fire trial, or the grant?
He came before the council and asked, what was that grant for, Mayor?
It was for air tanks.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
It's SCVX.
Yeah, so we're hoping we can get approved for that because that's a pretty, pretty penny.
Significant.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ken.
That's good.
Sure.
The next item is mayor's report. Every year, I'm required to do a state of the city report in the first ninety days. I usually do it in January this year, this, so. Here's my state of the city report. I'm doing something a little different for the twenty twenty four state of the city address. I recently, in recent years, I evoke Shakespeare's Hamlet and Fleetwood Mac's Don't Stop Thinking About Tomorrow to depict the turmoil of transcending through COVID and to the perpetual need to plan for the future of a fast-growing city. As mayor, I am always planning for a brighter future for Cave Springs. Instead of a play or a song to make the point, this year, I'll apply science. Planning for the future of the city is not without its challenges. In government, a city closely parallels a particle as it applies to Heisenberg's uncertainty principle of quantum mechanics. The principle states that if you know the location of a particle, you cannot know its momentum and vice versa. There are variables that alter the particle's momentum, trajectory, and location. With a city, as with a particle, you know, you can know the exact position and through history, how it got there. With variables like changes in the economy, decisions by elected officials, equitable application of planning regulations, taxes, and utility rates, the momentum and trajectory of a city's development can be significantly altered regardless of where it is at a given time or how it got there. Unlike particles, cities have tools available to minimize the effects of the variables. Tools for financial variables include emergency management disaster relief, emergency management mitigation funding, grants, minor employee assistance to significantly reduce costs on contract projects, low-interest loans, and low-interest bonds. Each of these tools makes substantial cost reductions to extend the project volumes without increasing taxes and fees. The city uses comprehensive land use plan, master street plan, twenty-year vision plan, and is developing the closer-focused downtown master plan and sanitary sewer master plan. Long-term strategic plans are guidance tools to diminish negative variables. In life, things do not and should not always go as planned, so plans should be reviewed and revised about every five years. The twenty twenty census revealed notable accomplishments for our city over the ten-year census period. A few of the notables as compared to the rest of Arkansas included fastest growing growth per capita at two hundred and eighteen percent, eleventh fastest actual population growth adding three thousand seven hundred and sixty-six people, and growth from one hundred forty-fifth to sixty-third most populous city up eighty-two positions in just ten years. As a result of the growth, Cave Springs transformed from a city of the second class to a city of the first class. Residential, commercial, territorial, and infrastructural growth offsets negative variables. For more immediate matters, a five-year plan is one of the most effective tools that I use. For a short-term tool, it to be truly effective, it must periodically be reviewed and evaluated as well. So, tonight, as we look at the state of the city, I'm going to do so through the lens of the past five years. This is akin to a reverse five-year plan to review, evaluate, determine, and determine the effectiveness of the past plan and support inferences used to formulate current revisions for the future. Cave Springs' growth was dynamic over the five years from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three. It closely reflects the changes in the twenty twenty census and demonstrates the successful use of a chestful of tools against Heisenberg's uncertainty principle-type of variables making the state of this city robust. The general fund balance has grown from seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty nineteen to over two million seven hundred and thirty thousand at the end of the twenty twenty-three for a five-year increase of almost one million nine hundred and ninety-eight, or ninety, one million nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, while an additional six hundred and seventy-five thousand was set aside for the community building restoration. During this time, we built a new fire station, added five police officers, seven full-time firefighters, and three civilian employees. In addition to daily operations, the park playground was improved for added safety and reduced maintenance. City hall renovations added safety and efficiency while backyard drainage, new roof, parking lot seal, and paint projects provided for growth-related needs and upkeep. Street fund balance decreased from five hundred and eighty thousand in twenty nineteen to about five hundred and fifty-four thousand at the end of twenty twenty-three for a five-year reduction of just twenty-six thousand dollars. In addition to basic operations, we completed four disaster recoveries, nine drainage projects, resurfaced a record thirty-four streets, about four times the number of projects, repairs, maintenance, and improvements of any previous five-year period while upgrading equipment and for efficiency and reliability. The sewer fund was restructured to move future growth funding from sewer rates that residents pay to impact fees paid by the developers who create the profit or create and profit from added demands on the system. Combined sewer balances increased from five hundred and twenty-three thousand in twenty nineteen to almost nine hundred and forty thousand at the end of twenty twenty-three for a five-year increase of four hundred and twenty thousand. In addition to basic operations, we've successfully settled a lawsuit and are constructing a lift station and main line to a regional traditional sewer system. The water funds were restructured to move future growth funding from water rates that residents pay to impact fees paid by the developers who create and profit from added demands on the system. Combined water balances increased from nine hundred and eighty-three thousand in twenty nineteen to over one million five hundred and sixty-three thousand at the end of twenty twenty-three for a five-year increase of five hundred and eighty thousand. In addition to basic operations, we reduced debt and rates, absorbed the wholesale rate increase, expanded service into a growth area, and improved technology and equipment for added efficiency. Looking back at the results of the last five years, basic reserves were increased from two point eight four seven million in twenty nineteen to over six million four hundred and seventy-one thousand at the end of twenty twenty-three for a five-year increase of over three million six hundred and twenty-four thousand through over eight million and forty-three thousand in alternative funds such as grants and emergency management assistance. Plus the addition of impact fees, we have improved infrastructure, updated technology, added efficiencies, increased services, and improved facilities to provide a dyna, for dynamic growth that building reserves for the future. Today's five-year plan includes completion of the transition to a traditional sewer system denative. There will be additional expansion opportunities for sewer and water main extensions. The plan includes a water tower as is required in the next few years and expansions of the water service area, which protects our system from the encroachment of other cities. Impact fees will be used to assist future development to make Cave Springs even stronger. The five-year plan continues the unprecedented resurfacing of multiple streets each year. We will continue working with RDOT to ensure negotiated agreements on the new Highway one twelve alignment and on improvements that they will perform prior to Main Street's dedication to the city. It includes continued work with RDOT for approval of sidewalk and trail connections from the expanded highway to Main Street to relocate utilities out of the expanded highway right-of-way and to see that a new traffic light is installed at Highway one twelve north and two sixty-four west. Although Cave Springs is a city of dynamic growth and robust financial position, it's imperative that we use our tools to prevent the negative influence of Heisenberg's uncertainty principle-type variables. We must have long-term and short-term plans, not dictates, that are used for guidance, and they must be periodically updated to stay current. We must continue residential, commercial, territorial, and infrastructural growth to offset negative variables. It is crucial to utilize alternative funding methods so taxpayers' money can be stretched and more can be done for less. To adequately use the operational tools in successful care of a city, it is important that city leaders have the necessary tools. Over the past few years in municipal government, I've discovered personal tools needed for taking care of the variables that impact the city. First and foremost, you must care for people who live here, for the community you live in, for providing better services, and for healthy growth that helps offset any negative economic impact on our residents regardless of the economy now and into the future. Next, public services requires service for others. Through efficient spending to reduce property taxes and water rates, it requires vision to create a downtown focal point through planning and ensure Main Street improvements before accepting dedication from RDOT and to ensure negotiated Cave Springs Parkway alignment is followed to keep downtown viable. Also, protection of city authority protects its ability to serve. As statutes change, it is crucial to a city's ability to effectively provide services. For legislation to be reviewed and analyzed to determine its long-term impact, actively voicing formal support and opposition to our state legislators is how city leaders protect against state intrusion that diminishes a city's authority and its ability to provide effective services for its residents. Effective care and service for a city starts with leaders that care enough to acquire personal tools through continued education. Knowledge is the tool needed to effectively implement policies and plans to overcome the Heisenberg's uncertainty principle-type variables that threatens the city's positive momentum. The successful use of these tools will overcome the quantum mechanics horn of negative influences. They ensure that we can maintain a robust state of the city and continue the positive momentum needed to take care of Cave Springs long into the future. Taking care of a city is as simple as four little words, you have to care. It's not nuclear science. Thank you.
Next is the public comments. Okay. Next item, I've had a request, and I don't see him here if you don't want to. But the request was to move into the appointment before I get into the updates.
Yeah, he already left.
He already left, so.
He already left, so.
This is a good stay long, that's why. Did you ask as well?
Yeah, and he, he, I was like, you know, none of the other candidates are here, so I feel like if you have an obligation to go take.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, y'all had a good opportunity to, um, interview him and others the other night, so.
Yeah, so just go in order.
Go in order?
I think so.
Okay, well, I'm gonna stop right, I think, um, they did that in the engineering report. Public works, we are getting, um, I think in the last week, I've got thirteen applications for technicians and for, um, directors. We are reviewing those and, uh,
Who's going to do any of those?
It'll be me and Grace and Jeff will have input in it.
Mayor, we hold, like, you know, we tend to hold you to maybe having some hires by the next work session, would you have a couple weeks' agree?
I'm required to not hire for two weeks when we post, but my intent is to be ready to hire at the end of that two-week period. So I hope to have people, they may not be here yet, some won't give two-week notice or whatever, but I do expect to have commitments there.
I have a question on this. So where is the job being posted?
It was posted in Indeed, it was posted in the, um, rural water, where there's licensed people, get that on a routine basis, and those were the two primary sources of.
Is it posted on website too?
Um, it's been posted on the website, the job descriptions are still up and it is still posted on the website, yes.
It's posted on Facebook and?
I don't, I don't use Facebook anymore, though.
I think it is probably the best.
So.
Yeah. It's one of the. Yeah.
Absolutely, I'm going to put it. I'm going to.
Yeah.
So you're saying that we don't post it on Facebook because?
I don't mind it being posted on Facebook and I can provide him the, uh, the information to post. I don't post on Facebook since I'm in meta. It doesn't download well, I spent eleven hours trying to post something. I'm not gonna do it from there anymore.
I understand it, doesn't matter who does it, but if it's for city, it's such an important thing that we have, we've had a special work session, we had all this stuff. Why is it not, is it hard to communicate? You came to ask him.
No, it's not hard.
So why haven't we done that?
Because.
I see, sorry. Would you be okay with them just posting and putting a link to maybe Indeed?
Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying every avenue that we can use, we should do it. My question is that this is such an important subject that we have been struggling with. Why can't, why is there no communication this, this to mayor and came to post that?
I just didn't know the two weeks, two weeks let's start over, but you could do the, you could do the Indeed thing, just like job opening.
Yeah, I just, I'm just getting into the fact that it's, it should, we need to really pay attention to that to make sure we're pushing.
Cause there could be some random person that moved this area, might have some experience.
And how about our employment office, have you worked with them?
I have worked with them.
It's such an important thing, I don't understand why we haven't worked with them.
Normally, they ref- they refer you to Indeed.
I, I understand that they have every avenue available to us, why are we not doing it?
When you post.
We haven't, we've done the same thing, we got the same result. We, it's just that I don't understand when they have this avenue available to us, why we're not using it?
We've never posted on Indeed before, that was my idea, especially that, and Indeed is where people go to look for jobs.
Right, right.
On Facebook.
And Indeed also posted several other of those type job, or several of the others shared or something. When you post on Indeed, it goes out under Meister, it goes out under several other.
And it also shows in Facebook ads, it will show on Facebook.
I understand, I'm saying that if they have so many avenues to do it, why are we not using it? That's what my question. You said it's on a website, right?
It is on.
What is the minimum payment for that job for the public not, for their public employee, regular employee that gives them? What is the pay range for them?
Those are posted, I don't have them in front of me. I have them here, the work session, went over them with you.
I know, but what was it? Was it sixteen hour to twenty-two?
Twenty-four, I think.
Sixteen to twenty-four. Have you checked the website to see what do we have on our website?
It says sixteen to twenty.
I have pictures of it.
Okay, I can update the new one, but that's.
What I'm saying that we are getting into a situation that we're pushing for this, pushing for years now to hire somebody, then we're not using what every avenue we have, we're not putting even correct hang there on a website that's for the city to ask him for it. This is, to me, this is really strange, I don't, I really don't understand that.
I understand, but.
I even offered to help you and you refuse it, you say you don't want my help. I don't understand what the situation is here, I mean, are we gonna work for the city and what's, you just went through these caring. I really care, I'm sure you care, we just went through that. If we're caring, we should be responsible that when we're losing this special life, we don't have people repairing that, we don't hire people to do it. How come we're not doing that? How come we're not using?
This is frustrating because you've just made in the last two statements, three false statements.
Okay, let me see what was false.
Okay, you said we have nobody doing the work. We do have, we, and I've mentioned it over and over again that we've had.
He said, he means we don't have anybody to work.
That's not what he said.
That's semantics.
And it, okay. It's also, he comes up time and time again and makes it about we don't have people doing the work, we have no one working here. And we, and as though when we bring up that we have a public works department, we do have two people that do assist and that do oversee the, uh, contractors in doing this work, it's like their street department. No, they're not street department, they're public works people. They're out doing meter reads, they're doing other things. We always talk about how we've not done any, um, or we've not hired anyone when we've been looking to for all this time. It was very clear, I was not looking for anyone for a while there because the last thing I wanted to do was hire a bunch of people to lay them off when we finally got into a different situation with contractors. That didn't work out, as soon as that didn't work out, I started hiring. But that wasn't, I mean, it's not that we've been trying to hire for four months. We just started trying to hire for the first time in three or four months because we were trying to put this out in a more efficient manner through contractors. There's a number of things that like that that constantly keep coming up that reflect negatively on what has actually been happening.
Basically, I wanted, I wanted to clarify because you said I made faults and if you wanna talk about false statement, then I'm gonna go into your false statement.
I'm saying, can I say one thing? Would you be happy, cause you brought up Facebook, which I think is, 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 you know, where else do, where else do people scroll is Facebook? If they just put out interested in working for the city of Cape Springs and public works, here's the Indeed thing, would that?
Or you know anybody?
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Oh, I, I mean, would that, would that suffice your Facebook?
It's not just for me.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, but I think it's a logical request, I think it's a great request. I mean, but do, would you be okay with that?
I'm okay with just saying that we got all these avenues available to us. My point is at one time back a few weeks ago, a couple of minutes, meeting ago, I wanted emergency meeting, remember? I asked you why I wanted emergency meeting because I want, I know where we're going. When Jeff came in, Mr. Mayor, when you're hiring Jeff, uh, in that meeting, you can go look at the minutes. I said that we don't, we don't, if you hire somebody like that, it should be very short-term and we all discussed it and you said, yeah, maybe a couple of months, it should be there. It went to year and now we're over a year, we still haven't gotten. You, you said that you didn't post the job because we decided we wanna hire from outside, outsource that job. However, we didn't even discuss that until the meeting that we had in store, that Mark was present in there, that we decided that we don't go ahead, go down avenue perhaps, and we bothered to seek out. But before that, all that time, positions were open, they should have been posted. Do you read the store from any last one? Before that, I asked you, I said, can we go ahead, post it? Because even if you hire one person, remember, I said, do you hire one person? It's still even the outsources we could use it, you said yes. But still it didn't get posted until you came back to me next meeting. We had that emergency meeting that JJ had, still it wasn't posted. But I'm saying that this is really important, it should be number one for this city to get folks hired and take care of that department. It's been more than a year, I'm happy to challenge with that. I don't make false information, it's not for me, it's not for my ego. I hope everybody puts their ego aside and worry about what the city needs. I think it's, sometimes you know, we have, we talk about leadership, the leadership is about what's best for everyone and not what's best just for a person. I don't say that because it's best for me, I say that because I feel right. We've been beating this months after months after months and it's continuing. And I'm to the point to say, I gave up, if nobody else wants to, I give, I really think we need to do something different, we've been doing the same thing. Oh, it, it cannot be acceptable if they have wrong amount of salary. After months of Mark and me and M-Way discussed, maybe we should pay more. And we're not even putting what we paid into the website. I don't understand why, why should it be incorrect? Is nobody looking at it? You're saying you're getting Grace and somebody else to look at it. I don't care who you get, don't get me, get Mark, get Mark, get somebody else. Like get somebody involved that can help with these. I don't have anything else to say, and I'm not, I don't have false statement.
Yeah.
In hindsight, I think maybe while we were doing it for future reference, I think we can still advertise, gather the applications, just because you have applications doesn't mean you have to hire. So in hindsight, maybe we should have put the jobs out there, gathered applications, so when it fell through, boom, you have it there. In hindsight, I think we should have advertised, even if we were getting, looking at outside source because we wouldn't be stuck right where you, where we are right now. You would have the applications, it just because, I mean, sometimes it takes six months to get your back from a job if it's a certain, certain whatever. But we could have gathered, in hindsight, I think we shouldn't wait anymore.
It doesn't mean you're hiring people, you're interviewing people. Like if, if you have, and I asked in a meeting, you promised me you would not list it. I posted and it wasn't posted again, went to emergency meeting. I, I really don't know what I need to do to make it, to make, make it clear that this is important for the city. This is not, I mean, getting this job, hiring somebody from outside coming in, doing this part of a Jeff coming, hiring full-time job. You don't have a department, we do not have a department, like police department as we call it, fire department, we need a department that has a responsible person for it, has people that are working it, has leadership that's gonna keep it together. Uh, I'm not saying that, you know, honestly, I'm not saying that for me, I'm saying it because of city. We really are not doing a good job on this area.
How many people do we have in the street, in the public works department?
Two. Right now, we have four, two that are in the building, two that are in the office.
And I don't shop the office.
Yeah.
Maybe I don't shop the office because they're, they're there, they'd never go to the field. So we have two active.
That's inaccurate, too, we have one that is a, that's certified in, um, the MS four. And when we're, when one of the other guys are tied up or we don't have someone else here that's in the.
She's not certified.
She goes to the field.
She's not certified.
She used to be, she did at that time.
Her certification has expired, so no, that, no. So we have two, we have two people, and I, it is, it is frustrating.
And I, and I've heard from those people too.
What?
I have heard from those people too, that they feel like they are under-equipped, that they do not have any leadership, that they, and I mean, that's, the thing is, is I, you see, the one thing I disagree with you about is the Facebook thing. We can, we can post on Facebook, I think that the big step was posting it on Indeed. The fact that in the year twenty twenty-three, we weren't doing that is bonkers to me and I don't think that I'm the only one who would uphold the mayor or anybody else about Indeed. I think, I think most people here, uh, know how everybody under fifty finds a job. So at this point, it's online and it's, it's, you know, they don't go toward unemployment, obviously, on Indeed, and so.
Indeed and LinkedIn.
And LinkedIn, and so.
Those are the two.
And so that's what we should be doing.
And no disrespect to MC, but, you know, no, nobody's looking, nobody credibly is looking on Facebook. You might see it, you might see it like.
I don't, I don't.
But I don't, no, no, I don't want to argue about that, I'm just telling you, LinkedIn is the, to me, that's the number one. Indeed is also up there, but other than that, one, one way, you know, the.
So MC's point is that we need to use it all.
Yeah.
We need to use it all, what would I do for everything? Not just pick, look, choose.
Sure, I get it, but it's.
MC's point is right, we need to be more aggressive, we need to have more.
That's, that's what, and, and, and on the website, I mean, I'm looking at it right now, it is incorrect. And it's just, I mean, that's, and it's just.
It was already posted, I took it from the same posting.
Essentially, the detail is key.
I understand, it will get updated tomorrow.
Well, and, and you know, I just, what I was trying to say, I was not able to finish there. What I was trying to say is just that, the frustration from MC, I totally understand it because on the one hand, you can sit up here and, and, and in this, uh, you know, state and city address, you can say, we paved a record number of streets and we fixed a record number of leaks, but in real time, when I'm driving down around the road or when my constituents are coming to talk to me about it, you know, why, you know, why is my three-quarter million dollar house on a street that's crumbling, right? And where's the city and what are they doing? Oh, and by the way, what's that water coming out of the ground right there on Ground Road as well, right? These are the questions we're getting in real time and we're also getting called by people who work for the city in real time who are trying to do this job and feel hung out to dry, frankly. And so it's just hard whenever we do bring these concerns up over and over and over and we do see that the problem is continuing the way it is, that when we bring these things up, it feels like, generally people, we get very defensive, we raise your voice, see straight your voice to MC, falsely accuse, no lying, and we didn't say anything incorrectly, frankly, and try to argue with them about semantics, right? And so I just think, we, we are all frustrated about this, our constituents are frustrated about it and we wanna see something done. And, you know, I, I think we need to focus more of our time on the roots, not the branches, you know, about like, you know, which social media platforms we post on. If we are posting online and we are getting applicants, that's a good step in the right direction. But why didn't that step happen earlier and why are these, you know, I, I can't find the Indeed posting, but I'm wondering if this happened.
That's one I've gotta do there.
Okay. Uh, I.
You just said.
You haven't.
Indeed it is, it's LinkedIn.
LinkedIn.
Indeed it is posted.
Okay.
And I'm getting, that's where I'm getting a lot of my, um.
Indeed, yes, just because that, I mean, that, in today's day and age, Indeed is where you're gonna find a ser- service level and like, you know, people who are wanting to be more hands-on manufacturing or city-type jobs. That's where we're gonna find people and, you know, like I said, I mean, that's a good step in the right.
I'm sure that's probably better than LinkedIn for those.
For that.
Like LinkedIn is better for my job.
Yes.
Yeah, it's more professional.
If you're like, LinkedIn.
But for the director, it might very well be a good.
Yeah.
Position to, to build the LinkedIn.
So how many positions are we short?
Ultimately, five.
That's the director and for other people under him.
Other people under him, there's actually six openings, but one is for, um, if we can get those five, we're in good shape, then he may, you never know with the director, they may have someone that they wanna bring in as a lead person to assist them. And I'm holding that until I find out from him and then we may look forward with another hire. But ultimately, if we can get five hired and one's a director, we're in good shape.
Five, one's a director and five more?
No, four more.
Um, watching about the Facebook that you guys, I understand where you're coming from, but when you're scrolling, say somebody wants to move to the area. They're not, you know, and they're like, oh, maybe they talked to a family member, someone else is scrolling. Hey, you wanted to come to the area and this is a good opportunity and the link is there. Um, so other people, families might want to come to the area and they're not thinking, let me check with Cape Springs, Arkansas, to see if any Joe, Joe, open it. When you're just a member, I mean, of, on Facebook of surrounding communities too, you know, you never know who will see it, so I, I do agree with him in that sense that having a Indeed, Indeed link there, because you never know somebody that knows somebody that wants to come to the area, doesn't know, hey, let me check Indeed for.
Yeah, and it's possible somebody wants to move here for like a director job.
Or if it was somebody that, hey, this is the perfect opportunity.
Mine has no work, so yeah.
I make a contrast, Mike said to that. Every avenue that's available to us, we need to use it, we need, we should use it. And honestly, Mr. Mayor, I say that with all respect. Get somebody from council or planning commission or attorney or somebody to help you with this process because you can't do it by yourself. I just make that statement not out of meanness, it's just that it, it usually it's really good to have other people help you with this process. Two people, you know, you're bringing people back, making sure of these details, the job, the amount of how much you're paying is, the salary is here, that kind of stuff. Uh, I really.
Many hands, right, like work, yeah, uh, for sure.
I mean, don't.
All right, next item is websites. And I can, uh, I spoke with the, uh, website lady late last week and we're getting Madison scheduled for training on that. And so that we can get that, uh, moving forward much quicker.
When you said Madison scheduled for training, what do you mean by that, like? When you said Madison scheduled for training, what do you mean by that? Like, she's going to be training to be able to do the updates on the website?
All the updates, all types of updates, adding people, adding, tying their email to them, uh, restructuring.
But we're still gonna have the same two thousand, two thousand four.
We, we will be addressing that with them as well. But we have two things going on immediately. One is we do have old technology there or old, uh, information there that needs updated immediately. And that's something that we've not been able to do, that she will get trained on and be able to do like within a day or two after the training. Then there's also a, uh, alert system that we need to get launched. That part of that will be, uh, she'll be sheltering some of that as well. And then at that point, we'll immediately go into looking and we will probably be putting, uh, information in front of y'all. So you can give input on what you want the website to look like and things like that. And we'll start working on the thing. But immediately, it's trying to get the right information on them. So that it's not outdated. And people missing and people that's not been here in a long time there, that we can't get to erase. We need her to know how to get people on, people off and link them to their information.
Will she have a plan of contact after the training?
Yes.
Because sometimes there's much.
Yeah. Now, to say that if they're a corporation and people come and people go, to say that she calls that point, they'll be there next time. You don't always know that. But she'll have a point that she will be able to find the next person, their replacement. So that will be done. The community building, if you've driven by lately, you've seen a lot of work going on on it. And they are moving forward. They're in the process of ripping out the old ceiling and doing things to be able to straighten walls and secure everything to be able to start moving forward. And, uh, they've been, there's been a lot of changes in the last two weeks to that building. And there's a lot to come.
There's something I'd like to bring up about the building. In our last meeting, you mentioned that the, in our two city employees that we have, public works, pulled off rubber jobs to tear out the side porch and sidewalk. It took two afternoons. I believe the place chief and our couple officers were up there helping direct traffic because our city employees were over here when they were paving the road up, uh, north of, uh, Marklet, on Elbrow. Uh, you had mentioned that was in the contract. I didn't know anything about it. Did I ask?
Yep.
None of us knew that was in the contract. So what I think needs to be done is before a contract is approved, we need to see the contract so we can go through it. So we have the knowledge that we need to look at the contract and prove it. I know it says in these things that, uh, resolutions that we give you the authority entering into the contract. But then when we see our city employees, I know it says it's forty thousand dollars. But when we see that and don't know that, it looks really bad for us.
Let me explain what happened there. First off, they did not go there while the other stuff was going on for two afternoons. They had torn down the old building long before the other, uh, project started. And they had tore out all of the sidewalk, but about five feet in the porch. I asked them one morning, or I talked to, uh, oh, uh, Larry one morning, or one Saturday morning and said, uh, the contractors asked us to finish that tear out. And he said, well, I won't. And it was during a time when there was supposed to be meter reads. He couldn't do the meter reads because, uh, he wasn't able to get into the control vices and have someone load them the way they're supposed to. That's a whole different thing. But he told me, he says, I'll get there at seven A M, rip that off of there because it took a backhoe about, should have taken about an hour to complete the whole project. He says, I'll be done by eight when I get ready to do the meter reads. Well, they didn't get there till nine thirty or ten. And then the work wasn't done till almost noon. And the contractor did not ask that it be loaded and hauled off or they just wanted it pulled away from the building. That's all he was there for. And I made that clear on Saturday. But the rest of that job, the, uh, was done off and on in about two hour spurts between dumpsters over a two day period that was about a total of twelve hours. If you take that and the other three hours, the total cost of the project was under four thousand dollars. And it was, I went to a water, I mean, to a, uh, community building committee meeting. And there was a lady sitting there that asked me when we were putting it out for bids. She said, did, uh, I know you're about to go out for bids, but you mentioned when we were there at the meeting to support it with council, that you were going to have public works people tear down that building to save a lot of money. You are still doing that, aren't you? And she got that from a council meeting.
Well, I understand about the building. I didn't, didn't know about the sidewalk.
The sidewalk was a part of it. The, the concrete was built together and they cut a slice, separated that five feet with the porch. Because the, and they waited because they had an awning up there and everything. And when they pulled the siding off, they let the contractor pull the awning and all down so they didn't tear anything up. And then they caught that little piece that was left and should have simply just pulled it out into the yard and walked away. That's all I asked.
Well, and what's done is done. I think part of Mike's question though is, is, would it be possible for us to maybe create some kind of like, I mean, we use Outlook, so not Drive, but something that has the contracts the city is entering into. Because obviously, we just, we have the resolution given you and where you're entering into the contract. I think what Mike is saying is it would be nice for us to be able to maybe go back and look at those contracts.
We don't.
Right. And sometimes you do if we got them in advance. That one came together later. Uh, but I don't have a problem with anyone looking at the contracts. But in a lot of cases, now this one's not that thick. But it's basically referencing a book that is.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of the details in the book.
But I do think that might be a helpful resource. And I mean, we could put that on a work session, but something like that where there is some, I don't know, I want to call it a library or a drive or anything. But, but we should be able to go look up, you know, members of the council should be able to go look at a contract anytime we have a question and we want to learn more about what's going on. Which I think that would be helpful.
I think whenever Justin brought the, the workforce contact, we then all made a use of, made some suggestions and made some changes. But, and that's what Mike's asking because, you know, honestly, I didn't always want to get this big. And our public work people do more than that. We don't have it anyway.
But when you're looking at thirty some thousand, you do it before it makes sense. And that's why I presented it.
I'm not saying it didn't make sense.
Hey, we didn't, we didn't know. But also, is it fair to say our public works two people shouldn't be working on the community building anymore?
They're not gonna be anymore. They're done. That's the only thing they were required to do.
Okay, because I, I just don't want to uphold for random things because that is not fair to them and we are paying an ton of money for that community building. So.
Right.
The architect, the manager, project manager needs to do the sharing. Please, don't utilize public works anymore if you are saying that.
Eric has got the receipt. You're not gonna use any more public works for the building. We're gonna put this on the work session to get contracts available with council.
This brings up something that I and Angie asked for, was an estimate of what it's gonna cost for the equipment that's gonna go into the community building. All we, wasn't it? All we got was chairs and tables. That's all we got. Didn't get any monitors, any speakers, any microphones, any of that, at least that I've seen. So we still only have an estimate of what that's gonna be.
Because it's not included.
And as soon as I brought the estimate on the chairs and tables, it was discounted. It was like, those are folding tables or folding chairs.
But.
I never said that.
I.
I said it and I stand by it. I didn't say it in that tone and I stand by it. I, I think that that's a poor use of government. Now, I'm, I'm different than Mike. I'm totally fine not putting this building with all the modern accoutrements that a community building needs to function. I think it would be silly for us to have invested the money on the front end. We know it's not gonna be a million dollars in TV monitors. We know it's not gonna be five dollars. We know it's gonna be, you know, maybe ten, twenty. I mean, we, we, we have a relative range. We know what these things cost. We know what it's gonna cost to go in there.
It's four thousand dollars. That guy has one. It was a stinking estimate.
And that would be easy to put together.
I sat here on the data we voted and said, I am not approving anything else for the community building because the people's here said they were gonna fundraise. And so I stand by that. I'm not, I'm not panting. I am gonna say, my vote is no. Those people were passionate. They showed up. They said they were gonna do the fundraising for everything else. Eight hundred, eighty thousand dollars for our city, in my opinion, is more than enough. Because they stood there and they said, or they sat there, stood there, whatever, and said that they would fundraise the, the rest. They just needed approval so they could quote unquote, power the payback.
Well, I, I think we're, we're well past what's gonna be really productive on this topic tonight. But I will just say, Erica, and I know what you're saying, so I can make that point. But, I mean, if it gets to the point eight months and they have not raised any money, are we really just gonna say, you know what, no, we're not gonna use the building. We're not gonna out it at all? I'm just saying, we've got to be realistic with this.
They're gonna, they're gonna, they said, yes, they're gonna sell their bricks. They're gonna do this. So I wanna see, you know, we committed as a city to this, right? We committed as a city. They showed up meeting after meeting after meeting, saying their stuff. They said, well, we can't go door knocking to try to get any money. I remember somebody saying that. And I said, so in, I will not be in favor of approving things if they have not made an effort. I think there should be an effort being made once it's complete. Or probably before it's complete, looking at doing fundraisers. I mentioned a fun run a long time ago and things like that. So, um, I, I look forward. I look forward to hearing what they're gonna do.
We'll, we'll dump Randy and, uh, over at lunch.
Okay.
Over at Randy and Mike's.
I'll, I'll appear to be done.
Yes.
Okay.
But.
We all gotta be in the fun run.
Well, maybe they can take the.
Whoever gets left, maybe it's gotta throw in.
Get a golf cart.
I have steel knees. I can't run, but I'll walk.
Well, we're.
I, I got one of those pull behind carts for my life, for my kids' money. I'll pull it.
There you go.
Okay.
You, you don't claim I don't, that, uh, delegate in that. And you've, we've already talked about microphones for here.
Mm-hmm.
And you have some background in sound systems and all of that. I wanna delegate you and Mike to find the information for the furniture and the information for the electronics. Because ultimately, I've got a lot else going on. So, next item on the agenda.
I already volunteered to help with microphones.
Yeah, I did volunteer. I'm not being.
How can you delegate two council members to do a committee when they can't discuss and talk about it? Because they're gonna ultimately.
I'm not asking them to do the same thing.
I think he was being.
He does the electronics.
I think he was being facetious.
Well, I gotta know for the minutes. So that's why I'm like.
I think he's being, put, put.
To some degree, but not really. I mean, it's, it's so easy to find this information and you want the information.
But it's your full time job, Eric and I will, I'm sorry, but hold on, hold on, hold on. It's your full time. Yes, but it's your full time job, Eric and I will. Let's abandon this and move on. Okay?
It's my full time job.
Can we use the internet and move on? Thank you.
All right, let's, okay. Uh, maybe the community.
So it's really not that important.
Okay, well, can we get to the things that, like, can we get to the city's business? Everybody has made their.
That's what I just tried to do.
Including you, Eric and I will. Let's go. Somebody's gotta finally start.
The next item on the agenda is appointment to the, to fill work one, position one. Do I hear, uh?
Wait.
Just. Now, this one is.
Yeah, we have to go into executive.
Can't they go into executive? It is ironed. So yeah.
Should we wait till the end?
For convenience, yeah, let's wait till the end. Maybe you do that one last.
You want to postpone that till the end?
We can get through all the business quickly.
Because I think that's what we did when I got appointed.
But then all council, then everybody gets back where who did through all the business, or wait.
No, they'll have to leave.
Sorry, nevermind. Sorry.
Let's go.
I mean, I'll take either way.
Okay, let's go to the next one. I'll say.
I just feel like we can make progress with these ordinance.
Because we talked about.
Exactly. Get some more out.
Yeah. Yes.
First item is the resolution, uh, to, uh, do work order number eleven. So do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion?
Not now.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. It did pass. What's the number?
Eleven, twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
That's perfect. So that did pass. Next item is the resolution twenty, or for work order number twelve.
So.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by J J, second by M C. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. That one passed. That will be twelve. Next item is the work order number thirteen. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Erica. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by J J. All, any, uh, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That one passed. It's item thirteen. Next item is the resolution to ratify and approve the execution of change order number one on the Fields Lane project. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion to, that was J J, second?
I said.
Second by M C. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That one passed. That was fourteen. Next item, uh, re- resolution to support participation in the payment grant. Do I hear a motion to approve? So, got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That's fifteen. That passed.
Well, that is.
No, that's a resolution.
Oh, sorry. I got that myself. Sorry.
Next item is an importance to amend, uh, chapter thirty on the, uh, operational ordinance. As discussed in the work session, do we hear a motion to, or motion to suspend the rules and place them third and final reading?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, got it by, by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M C. Uh, roll call.
Uh, let's start with, uh, M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Can you ignore the seven?
I do. It's twenty twenty-four dash zero two.
What is?
Zero two.
On December twenty twenty-four dash zero two, City experience a private Arkansas work to the town serving mayor and city council of the city of the experience is a public emergency.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by J J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M C. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
The city, where Russell's a city clerk treasurer, the city's been removed?
So you're talking about.
All for good. In blue.
Yeah, he just removes where the city, city before.
It just makes it clerk treasurer?
Yes. That was because we did both ways. It was in parts it would say city clerk treasurer, other parts it said clerk treasurer. So it was standardized into, if we're not saying the city mayor, we're not saying, no, like, it's standardized. So it's definitely.
Okay, if we're gonna keep it consistent, if you go to the, I don't know what page it is, public notification.
What page?
You want to go? Public notification. I'm not sure.
I think five, thirty, dot O six.
Public notification, meeting committees.
Yeah, definitely not where he goes.
In the absence of the city clerk treasurer, shall be responsible for the ongoing, the city clerk treasurer in blue. It's thirty twenty-two six.
Mike, what it's saying is in absence of Kim doing it, then the mayor shall designate who does it.
Yeah.
Or she'll be responsible. You're saying it says that city clerk treasurer. You're saying it's still the city clerk treasurer, yeah.
City court.
Yeah.
City's been taken out. It'll be consistent.
Yeah, they should, they should be caught, they should be caught.
So, do I have a motion to amend, to remove those areas that may have been missed?
So.
I don't think it, I don't think it matters since they're saying one thing and the other, but I was, when I was going through and catching items that were kinda changing like going back and forth. So I'll try to think of another, if I know.
Yeah, we just, I noticed it.
Just stuck out.
It stuck out, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't mind either way.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Mike?
Me, yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Okay, that did approve. And is there a, a emergency?
Emergency call.
Okay. Do I, uh, oh, there it is. Do I hear a motion to approve the emergency?
So moved.
Got a motion by JJ, do I hear a second? Second by Mark, roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, that one is approved. That was twenty twenty four O two. Next item is an ordinance amending the drainage criteria manual. And, uh, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by JJ, do I hear a, oh, I'm sorry, I.
It's just a spin to.
Suspend the rules and place it on third and final.
Go over that.
So, do you, your motion?
So moved, yes.
Good. JJ, make a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC, roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Sorry, just read. Uh, for December two thousand twenty four dash zero three, City of East Ridge, they found Arkansas Works to the chap serving Mayor and City Council of the City.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by JJ, second?
Second.
Second by Erica, any discussion? Roll call.
JJ?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, and do I hear a motion to approve the emergency call? Got a motion by JJ, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
Erica seconded that?
Yes.
Okay. MC?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
JJ?
Yes.
Okay, that one's approved, twenty twenty four. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to revise pay ranges for certain public official, or, uh, public workshop positions. And I'm gonna say, do I hear a motion to approve? We don't have the numbers yet, but that opens the discussion.
So moved.
Got a motion by JJ, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Now, I know we have discussion here because we don't have numbers yet.
Numbers got, under, you have numbers undercated.
Yeah, but I mean, for the actual, uh, if you choose to do adjustments, you don't have the numbers in the.
I've got here, okay, I got that.
Exhibiting for that adjustment.
Are we gonna, just, we wrote suggestions?
Or, I think we should, you said we were comparable to what other cities were.
Right, and above.
And so I think, I personally think this is good then, I, I don't want to raise it too high because our people that have been here longer and have more experience with the city, I, I don't wanna all of a sudden be paying someone half scale that's higher than an officer that just started, or, um, or that has been here for a couple of years, or all of a sudden we're higher than people in City Hall, I think if we are comparable, we should leave it. What is on the back?
Yeah, I only have one question. So, street technician, now CDL, sixteen to twenty four? So they take, so they just CDL sixteen to twenty four, I can't really appreciate this thing.
Because we require a CDL to be, uh, quite, uh, that they receive their CDL in a certain period of time after starting with the city. And so, we have the same pay range for, uh, street technicians, there were, uh, City of Rogers breaks those into two separate ranges, so I broke them down that way for the purpose of this. Some of these positions we don't have, but other cities did, and they fall under the umbrella of our public work. So that's why I added those lines and showed what we pay for the same position doing the same job as they're doing under a different title.
Can I, can I propose that we defer this to a working session and talk about it?
I definitely don't feel like we got.
This is gonna take a little bit of time.
Yeah.
And then we've got a different, a wide number of different opinions. And we'll, this is gonna take some time to resolve that.
Do I hear a motion to table? Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, I've got a motion from, uh, from Mark in a second from Erica to table this. You have to table it if you choose not to vote them. If you're in the middle of the discussion and it's going.
A motion to table has hierarchy, there was a motion to adopt, right?
Yes, to open discussion, yeah.
Set it aside.
Yeah.
So if you vote on the motion to table, it's gonna be.
So, we'll.
I think we can propose the job with the ranges we've got, we just.
Yeah, I agree.
Hold on.
I have a question.
Yes.
Justin, with this resolution, we have two positions that are posted in here that we do not have job descriptions for, we don't even have them listed in our city personnel policy.
Which ones?
Parks, parks leader and parks technician.
That's not, park, congratulations, the exhibit.
He was just doing, he said a second.
This wasn't part of the ordinance, it's part of the discussion point.
Okay, so approving this resolution does not approve these, this position.
It's just the exhibit that we would be filling out.
Mine was attached, that's why I was like.
Mine, mine was due, it shouldn't have been attached, Kim, but yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, 'cause, well, my concern was is, we can't, i- if that was the case, you couldn't pass this resolution with these two job descriptions.
No, this is not to be passed, this is, the exhibit I went with the resolution itself, this was just to keep them together, so they knew what they were talking about.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, that's been tabled. The next item on the agenda is the appointment. Oh, no, we didn't, sorry. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like to sign, that's tabled, thanks for the catch.
And these guys are all fools.
Yes, he does. Next item is the appointment, and we wish to go into a, uh, executive session, then I need a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by MC, second by Mark, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like to sign, we will adjourn to a, temporary adjournment to a, uh, executive session and we'll resume at the end.